I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Sciop Township Board of Trustees. After we call a roll, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hathaway?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Flintoft?
Here.
Jerome? Absent. Noel?
Here.
McLaughlin?
Here.
Brazil? Absent. We have Quorum.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Glad to be here, Institute of the Flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to adoption of the agenda. Is someone ready to move adoption of the agenda? Moved by McLaughlin, support by Noel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The agenda is adopted. This brings us to public comment. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the survey of the Board of Trustees. I don't see any members of the public, other than our attorney, in the audience. Is there anyone participating remotely who would like to comment?
Yes, there's two people. Kathleen, your own.
Hi. Hi Kathleen. Kathleen, we can't hear you.
It's not muted?
No. Maybe you have bad connection?
Kathleen, we're not able to hear your comment.
Sorry, Rob? Okay. Rob, your, um...
Well, why don't we wait and see if we can have the other public comment and then see if there's more than, more questions to answer than you can do?
No, this is Kathleen, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you now. Okay, that was something on your end, just to be clear. My end was fine. Kathleen Brandt, Sciop Citizen, I want to point out a correction in the meeting minutes for the regular board member meeting, September 13th. Specifically, my public comments on page four, the first bullet item. The first part of that sentence, that bullet reflects trustee McLaughlin. It continues to say trustee McLaughlin that I wrote to, that isn't correct. It should be trustee Jerome in the second, second notation of trustee name. Got it, thank you.
Anything else Kathleen? If you would like to respond, trustee Noel, to Mr. Pattinson's questions.
Rob, when the EPA comes in September, late September, they were never going to have contact with the township board. That they're just coming to gather samples from different sites.
And, and he wanted to know if, if there was kind of a
Prediction.
Opinion from those of us here that the Court of Appeals decision sending us back to the third consent judgment made it more likely that the EPA might intervene.
We don't know yet, that, I can't say, no, but I don't think anybody can say on that. Sorry, thank you.
There aren't any other public comments. That brings us to approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes. One of them is for our special meeting. On September 13th. Are there any corrections to the meeting minutes, the draft meeting minutes for the six o'clock special meeting of September 13th? In that case, is someone ready to move approval of those minutes? Moved by Noel, support by McLaughlin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those minutes are approved. That brings us to the seven o'clock regular meeting of September 13th.
Some corrections.
So it sounds like there are some corrections, let's go through page by page. Page one, corrections. Trustee Noel.
Okay, so up at the top, also present, she has Ann Mandy, no last name provided. It should be Porter, she's got it later in the minutes. Yeah, I just, I just got that, okay, from her, yeah, okay.
Okay, so that's one correction, anything else on page one? Page two? Page three? Page four?
I have a cuddle.
Well, there's, there's the one correction that we got received from the public comment. Trustee Noel.
Okay, so also in Kathleen Brandt's comments, last bullet point in front of City Hall today, yes, Township Hall.
And Pat Stein.
Under Pat Stein, Township Hall.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I would like to correct, I think this is really, this is not a correction of anyone's comment as much as a sort of editorial choice. I think when having a list of bullet points and saying that someone made the following points, it, it gives that, those points a kind of weight that is not reflected in the way that some of the other comments are represented. So I'd like to suggest that wherever it says "made the following points," which actually happens on several pages, that instead it just simply say that the individual said, and then whatever the points are. That's sort of more consistent with the way that other comments are, or public comments are represented.
You mean, you don't, don't want the word points in here?
No, I don't want the words "made the following points" because I think that implies that those points were actually made, when actually they were just things that were said.
So you could say, you'd be fine with Kathleen Brandt stated?
Yes.
Stated the following points, that would be also an alternative, that would be fine too.
Okay. Stated, addressed, that kind of stuff. So it's the made.
Yeah, it's, and, well, if you compare that with the way that some of the other comments are represented, it, it creates an imbalance. The other thing that's an imbalance, and I heard from the individual whose comment is represented is Abby Vaquilian. And he was disappointed to see that he had been sort of paraphrased and sort of reduced down to one sentence. And that none of the specifics that he had provided made it into the minutes. And that sort of stands out, especially when you look at some of the other comments. For example, Jillian Carey on the next page, or David Reed, or anyone else really. It seems to have more specificity and more,
Yeah.
more length of their comment. Kathleen, if we're gonna do it, we should do it for everybody.
I can, I can put more in there, I was sensitive to the fact that he was, you know, reporting an alleged crime. So I didn't want to get too far into the details there. It's like when, you know, Kim, Kim Moore says that she's a gun owner. You know, we also don't include that in the minutes, I mean, there's, there's certain things. But I can say that, you know, he provided a description of what he saw and things.
Well, he also cited, I believe, specific, in, either in this comment or in this prior one, he cited specific documents that were, and those citations aren't included. I think, you know, if we're gonna-
He was talking about the, who, the incident after the last meeting. He wasn't
Well, I, I think, I, I think if you go back and look at his comments from the meeting, there's more specifics there than are represented here. And whether there's a judgment about sort of leaving out specifics for some reason.
Yeah.
Then, you know, I think that, that, there's a conversation that needs to happen with Abby and he has to agree with it, I guess. I don't know that it's up to us-
I haven't heard from Abby.
Well, he, he talked to me, or talked with me at great length about it.
So do you have a specific suggestion here after foreigner go home? What would you like to see, Will?
Well, I, I didn't go back and listen to his comment to get all of it verbatim, but obviously, somebody is listening to the comments and getting them verbatim. And somebody is making a choice about what to represent.
Yes, I am, Will, so talk to me, what do you want?
Well, I'm talking to you.
Okay, what do you want?
Well, it's not just you who's working on this, there's also a transcriber who's working on it, so-
A recording secretary.
Somebody should listen to the comments and put in the detail and not sort of wash out the detail. I think that's not serving the person who's making that comment.
And I will say, when somebody's alleging a crime, I do make judgment calls. It's like when somebody uses an expletive, I, I don't include it in the minutes. You know, I mean, there's just, there is certain judgments, so if you would like more detail, we can, we can put more in, but I don't want to get into, you know, too many specifics when I know that it's an ongoing investigation with the sheriff.
Well, I'm, I'm not here to represent Abby, I'm just conveying, since he didn't come, I'm just conveying what he told me, and he was disappointed in the way that he, he been sort of, yeah, the brevity of it and the lack of specificity that he felt he had conveyed. Especially when other people's comments are quoted at such length.
Okay, so Will, it's, it's the board's responsibility under the Open Meetings Act-
Oh, here's Abby.
Correct or revise.
Can't get in.
Bill, you can, yeah, Jim, Jim Burdy? That door should be unlocked.
To revise the minutes, so if we're going to revise though, we need to do it during this board meeting.
Right.
Just, I'm just saying, I hear what you're saying, I hear what she's saying. I'm just saying, if there's gonna be any revising, we need to do it.
Well, and I think that raises another question, and I've heard from several people about that too, and that is this new practice of bringing regular meeting minutes to special meetings for approval, I think that's, that raises another question.
Well, I, I'm doing that because that's what the law is, when, last August, when the, yes Donna, and, and that's not what our practice had been done, we'd always brought them to the next regular meeting, which I, correct. And that's what we'd always done, and I thought was, made, made more sense. However, I know last August, I brought one set of meeting minutes, not to the next meeting, but to the next regular meeting. And it was in the course of all the media coverage, it was actually Lucas Larson, the reporter, who said, hey, I'm reading this, he's a good investigative reporter, he said, hey, I'm reading this statute here, and it actually says, bring it to the next meeting. And, and then I looked back at the statute, and I thought, oh shoot, he's right. So I'm just trying to do that, that's all. Out of respect for our citizens, I believe the regular meeting minutes should be at the next regular meeting. Because special meetings, like tonight, we're doing the minutes, but then it's a closed session. I think we should, I, I agree Donna, it just, I think the law compels us to do it at the next-
I'm moving on Jessica. I just, I just, I just want to go over Rickman's office, the law allows you to do it both ways. He's trumpeting, he's not giving us a chance. Two meetings in a row, my, my comments have been abbreviated to nothing, to nothing.
Do you have input on the minutes?
Yeah, yeah, I have input.
Why don't you hand it to me?
Can I sit up for three minutes?
Why didn't you come up?
Why don't you hand it to me, because-
No, I'm gonna hand it to everybody, I've got a promise for everybody.
So that's fine.
I'm gonna correct two of them. One tonight, and what I don't understand is that how come the comments from Jillian Carey and the rest of them is half a page on one, is only three sentences? If you're phoning it from Zoom, up from this point on, I want all my comments verbatim from beginning to the end to be printed. If you don't like it, I'll give you a tape recording. Because I read, my comment has been abbreviated to said, oh, he was accosted at his house. Nothing about they were waiting for me, nothing about they call me fucking foreigner, you don't belong. Accosted could be someone said, call you son of a bitch. Nothing about the fact that they knew about Rahal Drive. And one of them got arrested already, in case you don't know. The day after, somebody else attacked me and they got arrested on charges. Right at Domino's Pizza here. For all the people who want me to video it, as if I know when they're gonna show up and do that to me to video it. My purpose here is completely different than the food violence happening, you know what my purpose is? My purpose, I want to put an end to people showing up saying they're a Democrat and they're not. Jillian Carey is not a Democrat, she's a Dino, Democratic name only. She says she has party affiliation, Democratic Party has no level has ever handled her. She hasn't donated one dollar, she hasn't landed one phone bank, and then she tells me in person that there is no difference between Democratic Republicans, excuse me, and I asked her, I said, just, I'm gonna talk, you messed up my, you messed up my two of them, I'm going to say this, I'm gonna quit. I tell her, you mean to tell me that if Ruth Bader Ginsburg was in the Supreme Court, we would have Roe v. Wade over ten? She goes, who is Ruth Bader Ginsburg? Who is Ruth Bader Ginsburg? She had, excuse me, no, no Abby. She has no, yeah, yes, you're talking, it's all permanent. I want to know why is it, why is it that their comments are reported comprehensively, half a page, three hundred page, and my comment only says three sentences? Three sentences?
You missed the explanation.
Let's, let's step-
Okay, let, let me start with this.
A score of the minutes is where we're at.
So Abby, I think-
You are not gonna dictate Jessica Nugget as well to what I say, how I say, I'm sixty years old. I am the, hold on a minute, I am the guy who is saying that, to put a stop to this crap. I go poll watch, where you guys would even, never even dream of going. Alabama, Mansfield, Ohio, downtown Detroit, face to face with partners, Charlotte, New Carolina. I've never said no to my country. I was an official translator for FBI after nine eleven. You don't play this game with me to cut my comments to three sentences and write their comments, we're in full freaking page. And you, you are supposed to be friends, equality. You want to report, report, everyone is equal. Don't quell the speech, neither side. So here, I sent an email to Jessica, she responded back to me, this is September thirteen, two thousand twenty, to the board. I said, from Abby Vaquilian to Sciop Township Board of Trustees.
This is on the other minutes.
Yes, I'm gonna correct both of them. I am going to correct both of them. I am, you adopted the wrong comments, you had access to the Zoom. You have no right to change my comments to, to what you wrote. What you wrote is not reflective of what I said, you're quelling my speech. If I misquote you based on, you have documents, you can put the same source. Why is it that you're correcting them, commenting accurately? You pulled the same source. You listened to Zoom, you wrote for them, I have to think, you wrote verbatim what those people said. But for me, it became something I never said. I'm gonna correct both. So, I say, I would like to correct, Jessica, don't interrupt me please. I would like to correct the way my comments are recorded in the August thirty three meeting minutes. Dear Board of Trustees, here is how my comments appear in the draft minutes. Abby Vaquilian thanked the supervisor for working with the state representative Donald Lewansky to bring one and a half million to Sciop Township. He was dismayed when Lozinski was confronted in, in the hall by Kathleen Brandt and Jillian Carey regarding the funds received. Vaquilian accused Jillian Carey of being racist for describing someone by race in the court documents. Here are the corrections. Abby Vaquilian thanked the supervisor for working with state representative Donald Lewansky to bring an additional one point five million dollars to Sciop Township. He felt the state representative Donald Lewansky was being physically threatened when he was, when she was confronted outside the township hall by Kathleen Brandt and Jillian Carey, where they physically closed their distance on representative Donald Lozinski, literally being inches away from her face and her head. He intervened to stop them from confronting representative Donald Lozinski in such close proximity.
Three minutes is up.
Well, my three minutes is, my three minutes is, I gotta read this, my three minutes is up. I'm chanting two crime meetings today, because your system is broke. Because a system we chose as to report, some people actually are not, look, we, it's like, we all doing from the same facet. Why is it that Barack Obama's water has mud in it? And those ones are clear. So I'm gonna, it's one paragraph only, I'm gonna say, she asked him-
Can you, can you give it to?
Yes, I'm gonna read it, and this is, I'm gonna give it to you too. He asked them to step back from her because they were in her personal space. Upon which Kathleen Brandt hit him with an open hand on his back very hard, and said, take it away Abby. Upon which she responded, I totally agree with representative Lozinski's point of view. She's the leader of the Michigan Democrats in the state House of Representatives. She is a great friend of Sciop Township, she has brought millions of dollars in grants to Sciop Township. Kathleen and Jillian, your conduct are unbecoming. This is not how you treat and physically threaten anyone, especially not one of the top leaders of the Michigan Democratic Party, when personally, who personally knows Donald Gretchen Bigmore and Angela DeNese, and the rest of the leaders of Michigan Democratic Party.
Abby, Abby, you have to stop, we, we can't, we can't take up the meeting with this, so-
Well, it's, it's over, when, I'm done, the time that you interrupt me, I have four more sentences through it, then I'm done, I'm handing it to you, four, literally four more sentences.
Read the four sentences, then it's, then we're done.
That's fine, Vaquilian accused Jillian Carey of having built in biases and prejudices toward non whites. Describing a person on their race by their race in her court documents. Motion on order to show cause of violating ballot process, foreign personal protection order, contempt of court, motion to stand personal protection order, Jillian Carey versus Joseph Romarigo, case number sixteen dash zero zero one three zero four dash PH. He quoted her written statement, written in her, in her above stated motion. Harassment means conduct directed toward the victim that includes, but is not limited to, a repeated and continuing uncon- unconsented contact that would cause a reasonable individual to suffer emotional distress. To me, sending a black man, or any man for that matter to my house, Adnaj is doing exactly that. So not only she has a problem with black, but she has a problem with all men. Tell your mother if I, as a man say, oh, anyone come to my house. So this is the correction, you see how vastly different it is? I'm not gonna go through this one, do not adopt, sorry, do not adopt the minutes of today. I want to have a chance to correct my comments, and to, even worse than this.
Okay, so Abby, we have to correct the minutes at the meeting at which we are approving them. So give, give to us, whatever the correction is that you want to have-
Sure, I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you one, just right now, then I'm gonna-
We have to stop the comment now, because you've used up your three minutes and then so.
Well, Will, if your system wasn't broke-
I understand that, that you see a problem with the way that we're handling minutes.
Well, you look at it, put today's minutes in front of you, read what Jillian Carey's comment, read the Brandt's comment, read, read everyone's comment, and then read my comment, three sentences.
Time out here, I mean, Abby.
There's no time out Jessica, you did not report, you did not report, and very, you don't report what I said actually. Let's get the Zoom, compare what I said and compare this, and then look at your written text of them and written text of them.
Abby, Abby, we need, you need to just hand us the text, please.
The way that I present draft minutes, and this is what happened a year ago, when women were talking about how sexist Will is, and all these things, and, and the board was like, whoa, 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 reel that back a little bit. Do we really need to say sexist? Do we really need to say misogynist?
Yeah, yes, I want my comments repeated. When they call me fucking, when they call me fucking foreigner, I don't want to see, they call me an explosive. When they go wait for my, me at my house, then I want it in entirety, it's my right. I want all my comments verbatim, comma, period, off.
So, so Jessica, Jessica, I'm, I'm gonna intervene here. It's time to stop with the bickering about the minutes between the clerk and the public. Abby, 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 we're done, we're done. You hand over whatever it is that you want to hand us, but we're, we're done talking about comments on the minutes. So just, just give us, give us whatever the correction are, you want to have me-
What the correction for today has, if you want me to complete that, I have to do it off my phone, because I left the client meeting. I'm chanting two clients, because, because of this, today, I lost two clients because of your system.
So, so thank you.
This is the last minutes.
Right.
And compare what I said, what was written. I mean, the other side is-
So Abby, Abby, just hand, just hand us what you want to hand us, but we're done, we're done with the comment now.
Okay, what about this meeting, how do I correct the one at this meeting, the one from the night, this is from-
We correct them now, if the board would like to include expletives and more detail, we may, but we don't have to, it's the board decision.
You didn't, for what the expletive, Jessica? I have two pages, you wrote three sentences, who are you kidding?
Give us the text.
And, and I do, generally speaking, if the board disagrees again, I prepared these draft minutes. When people are-
Why is it, there's, why is the door still complete here? No, 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 why is there so complete, mine is not.
When people are describing things such as what you were describing, which was reported to the police.
This wasn't reported, this was them confronting Lozinski.
That's not what I'm talking about.
No, this one you also messed up.
And, and when, when people are making those sorts of things that have, are, are going to the police, I, in my judgment, do not include them in full, because I know that there's a police investigation.
So what, you're not the judge on jury, it's my case, I wanted to-
These are the board minutes, their draft, that's my judgment.
You don't have a right to report one full and one not full.
Enough with the dialogue between the clerk and the public.
Well, she's talking BS.
Well, enough with that back and forth.
I mean, look, you're saying one sentence.
Abby, Abby, thank you, thank you.
I wanna correct the minutes of this-
I understand that you do, but you have used up your three minutes, and we are moving, we are moving-
Well, you guys, you guys have a chance to do the other one.
I understand, we are moving on now. It's not alone, it's not on-
I'm gonna put it on the record that if you approve these minutes,
I understand that you're moved now.
My comments, I'm gonna show up the next meeting, I'm gonna correct these ones.
So you can come tomorrow, and you can talk about, again, during public comments tomorrow, but we are done with your public comments for tonight.
That's fine, that's fine, trustee Noel.
Okay, I reviewed MCL one five point two six nine on minutes in the Open Meetings Act, section on paragraph one. It says that the minutes shall include all roll call votes taken at the meeting. The public body shall make any corrections in the minutes at the next meeting after the meeting to which the minutes refer. Jessica was correct, it's at the next meeting.
Well, Kathleen, that isn't the point, it's she reports. No, wait, hold on, she reports the one side, three quarters of the page, mine is three sentences, I want to know how, I spoke longer than that.
Abby, you have to be quiet now, that your time-
No, I don't have to be quiet, because you guys are not being fair. When the system is unfair, as Monty Lutachin says, you go outside the system. If you guys want to treat me equal to them, then I say quiet. But when you signal me out, not you, but when I just signaled out, and my comments are X and Y, and I have three quarters of the page, I have three sentences, I'm not gonna adhere to these stupid rules.
I understand, and I-
I am not one like the other people, Will. I'm a committed organizer, I fought for this country ever since I came at age sixteen.
We heard, we heard, we heard you.
So you are not, I'm not the one, do you look, we all train with the same rule or we don't. This Sciop Township little box has got extended, you guys, the one for us, starting nineteen fifty's, get off.
We have to stop now. Trustee Noel, thank you for checking the statute. I, it's, I, that's not the primary question, but it is a question that was raised. All right, so we're moving on. Do we, are, if there are no further corrections? Oh wait, we are, we are still stuck with the correction to page four. I think, as I would suggest, that we do add more detail to Abby's comment.
Not all of it, not more detail, I want all of it, as to the way I wrote it.
And on page-
I want that to get, that to get attached, what I gave you, I want it attached. I don't want somebody else to speak for me.
So Will, page four, you'd like me to add more detail?
More detail to Abby's comment, and I, when we get to it, his comment at the end of the meeting too, since he addressed both of those. The, that brings us to page five.
I've got a correction.
Trustee Noel.
If I misquote it one more time, there's gonna be war, I'm not kidding you. If one more comment of mine is, no, hold on a bit, if one more comment of mine is done this too, I am gonna bring in lawyers, you guys haven't seen the lawsuits yet, I've filed more federal lawsuits than anybody else, I'll give you the cases. I will tell you in lawsuit, from here to the end, I will turn it.
You have to stop now.
No, I don't have to stop. You have to stop mistreating me, you are the government.
I don't, we're not-
Not you, the government, buddy.
You're not-
You have to stop signaling me out and calling my speech. To give voice to the people who agree with you, and to quote the voice of the people who don't agree with you, that's Trumpism.
All right, we, we don't want to do anything like that, for sure.
No, you are, but the next result is that, even if you don't, correct it then.
We're trying to correct it. Trustee Noel, did you have a further correction?
Yeah, I did. The middle paragraph under Jillian Carey spoke, they state to the road commission, it should be to the roads advisory committee. It's not the road commission.
He actually said the commission, but I can put in parentheses the advisory committee.
Oh yes, I think you're right, I remember
I know.
feeling like in the meeting, like people were meant to say something that they weren't saying.
That is what she, but I can put in parentheses what she meant. That is what she said, I can put in parentheses what she meant.
So any other corrections? Any other else? Um, and I'd just like to say that same correction, whatever we come up with for the made the following points.
So, sorry, Will, I, I venture that none of you guys have served this country in a military capacity, ever. So have some respect for those of us who did.
My father fought.
Your father, but you didn't, you didn't. I did, myself, so did my father, I'm talking about me.
Well, thank, thank you, Abby, for your-
Thank you, but this is not how you treat somebody who fights for a country. You don't misquote them.
I, I understand.
However it happened, no fault to anybody, I just wanted to stop.
Okay, we're, you have to move on with correcting the minutes. Page six, are there corrections to page six?
Two clients, move on. Now do the system.
Page seven. Page eight. Page nine. Page ten. Page eleven. Page twelve. Page thirteen, there's two places where I think it should say reactivate, and it just says reactive. One, one in-
Oh, I see.
Sort of like two different places in my comments.
Got it.
Page fourteen. Page fifteen. Page sixteen. Page seventeen. Page eighteen. Does anyone have any more corrections? Okay, there are any until we get to Abby's comment. And then I would just say this on page twenty-three, if we could just do the same thing and add more detail to Abby's comment.
Will just attach my comments, don't add more detail, please attach what I gave you.
And then for the minutes, for, what I would suggest is for the minutes, because I know that we cannot go back in time and change minutes that we've already approved. What I would suggest is that we add to Abby's comments for this meeting to the minutes, his, what he has submitted as his correction for the prior minutes. And that way, we can at least address his concern that he's being represented the way that he intended to be represented.
Are you saying attach them to this meeting's minutes?
Well, or incorporate them into, into his, you know, what he said and what, and, and-
Yeah, attach it to the minutes, please.
Okay, attach it to the minutes.
And then I want even that one for this time, for next time, attach that one too. I want all my comments from this point going forward in full to be attached.
All right, so yes, I guess that's what I'm saying.
I wouldn't attach them to the minutes, but we can put them in-
You wanna attach them to the minutes.
Public.
Unless you wanna read the Zoom and repeat what I said, you don't do this for the other ones, then this up to you.
This is, this is your record of what you said, this is not the board's record.
So, let's play the Zoom then, let's play the Zoom, let's listen to the Zoom what I said.
So, so Abby, what I would, what I suggest is, um-
So this, this is the games which is being played, Will.
I, I understand, I'm trying-
I'm on the Zoom, I say what I said, let's listen to like twice from this.
We have to move on with our meeting.
Well, you have to correct some of it, you can't just-
I understand, I understand that this is part of the problem with incorporating approval of minutes into-
No, the problem is that you incorporate the people that we like, fully, the ones that we disagree with, we cut them down to nothing, we chop it down to make it sound like this is something-
Abby, what you made your point, I, we're just trying to figure out how to incorporate your comments. And what I would suggest is, I think what the clerk was suggesting, and that is to put it either into correspondence or, or to put it into all the comments.
They are, they are, put it where you put the, the record of the other people, where did they go? When Jessica calls the other people, okay.
Public comment, all right, so why don't we incorporate this into the public comment for this meeting? As, rather than communications to the board, we'll just say that this was his public comment. And that will be a way of addressing the correction.
He's misquoted, he corrected the misquoted comments.
Ready to move the approval of the September thirteenth regular meeting minutes as corrected? Moved by Noel, support by McLaughlin, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, minutes are approved as corrected. That brings us to unfinished business, and that is our closed session. So we have a model motion to move into closed session as permitted by MCL fifteen point two six eight E to consult with the township attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with Attorney General, Department of Natural Resources, Natural Resources Commission, and Water Resources Commission, and the city of Ann Arbor, Washtenaw County Health Department, Washtenaw County Health Officer, Huron River Waterhead Council, and Sire Township versus Gelman Sciences, Inc., case number eighty-eight dash zero three four seven three four dash CE, currently pending in Washtenaw County Circuit Court because an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the township. Is there a second? Okay, made by Hathaway, support by Noel, all of those.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, sorry.
Just for that.
Yeah, sorry, I forget. Closed session, we have to call a roll call, please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?